And published, give editor and publisher.
Really?
Yeah. And, you know, Nick took the photos and I gave him off of the copy. I guess he's very private listening, wanted to show it off to all you, asked me to come.
Thanks for making it down.
I'm sure.
Yeah, which photo was it?
We're gonna, we're gonna call you last and then recess or pick up.
Photo of the month. Nick should be happy.
Oh, Nick is over the world. Yeah, it's kind of a big deal for him, but I guess Arvin thought it was good for the guys as well, so.
You know, Nick and I have a shared history.
We both lived in Beijing. We kind of crossed paths a little bit, so. Yeah, we know the same, we know the same people. Yeah, so. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it didn't even come up, I'd seen him for a couple of years and we were in the van.
I was just talking to him because of.
Another good friend of mine, actually, he was a former roommate, college buddy, and he took the pictures at my wedding. He's a photo journalist for the SF Game. So a guy named Doug Zimmerman, you'll see him everywhere, he takes like ninety percent of the photos. And I was talking, and he knew Doug, and then that turned into China talk and, yeah, so.
That's cool.
Yeah.
You speak, uh, Mandarin?
No, I know taxi Chinese.
Taxi Chinese?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not my Spanish.
What's up, buddy? How you doing? How's your, how's your little commission role?
Are you reading packets? A lot of reading.
Yeah, I watch much of planning work.
Yeah. Well, you can talk to one other person. Without breaking the brown act. Yeah. Find a buddy. Well, you can talk to one other person, it helps. Yeah. Here, here, I'll give you a pro tip. If you need to find out what somebody else is doing, black talk and go at it. It's okay to ask for, how's the, I ask Jason all the time, how's the council feeling about this? How do you think the Parks Commission is feeling about this? And they're allowed to share their opinions on that.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call our meeting to order, tonight's regular city council meeting of June third, twenty twenty-five. Can you please join me as we rise and for our pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you do real call, please?
Councilmember Brando Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Lamontina.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph.
Here.
Mayor Pierre Washington.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. A report on closed session, confirmation of reportable actions, Mr. Ross.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, you convened, um, without Councilmember Brando Cruz at four thirty-four in open session, and after determining that there were no comments on the matter's agendas for closed session, you adjourned the closed session at four thirty-four. Councilmember, uh, Brando Cruz joined the closed session at four thirty-seven. You concluded the closed session at six thirty-one P M. Uh, I will prepare a written report upon return from closed session, consistent with the provisions of Government Code Section fifty-four nine fifty-seven point one B. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions from council? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Uh, tonight, we have one update on our District Five from Supervisor Bellia Ramos and two proclamations. We're gonna have Supervisor Bellia Ramos come forward because she has a date with her son a little later on. So we can get that out the way so they can enjoy the evening. It's a date, man. It's a date.
Good evening, Mayor Washington and council members. It's a pleasure to be here with you to, uh, just give you a little bit of update. I, it's one of those, uh, moments where I get to share some really good news of great things that, uh, we're doing at the county of Napa and want to make sure some of them we're collaborating on, and some of them we're taking the lead on, but they do affect the South County area. So, uh, thank you again for making the time on your very busy agenda as you head into budget season to, to make time, uh, for, for me and my, my guest here, my, my son Lucas joining me. Um, we do have some slides and there's some greater detail, and I'm gonna try and zip through because you do, uh, you do have other, uh, other matters to, to tend to. Um, so first and really exciting is I want to talk to you about our library remodel. As you know, we are the tenants of your building, and this property has not been remodeled since two thousand twelve. And so the update is gonna have new furnishings, flooring, paint, doors, exterior signage, and we have this planned for the summer. It is gonna require a small closure, but I think we can all agree this is a space that is used tremendously, especially by our students on those half-day Wednesdays, and it's gonna be a really great enhancement. And I look forward, uh, to joining all of you when we do the refresh ribbon cutting for this facility. Um, just to the north, um, you know, the airport has not always been the greatest of subjects between, uh, the county of Napa and the City of American Canyon, but that's not the case right now. Right now, we've got some really exciting things, and we have great investments happening at the airport. And our two FBOs, these are the fixed base operators, they basically run the airport on-site, and we have two, and they are, um, Sky Service and, um, oh, gosh, the other one. What's the other one? It starts, no, it, though, the taxiway case, that's a, that's the straightaway, Atlantic, sorry, Atlantic Aviation. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about what's exciting about Atlantic Aviation. Um, starting on July third, Atlantic Aviation, through sublease agreement, is bringing J S X, that is Jet Sweet X, to run, uh, non-stop flights that you can purchase a ticket, you don't have to own a plane, you can purchase a ticket on J S X to fly into either Santa Ana or Burbank, and that is a tremendous enhancement. But what is more important about this enhancement is that for years, J S X, uh, has operated through Concord Airport, which is now managed by a former American Canyon employee, Greg Baer, and they have promoted that you can fly into Napa Valley and you drop into the City of Concord. And so that is no longer gonna be the case, you can actually buy a ticket straight into Napa Valley, and we're really excited about that. So that'll be starting on July third. Uh, next, uh, really exciting, you've heard my predecessor, Keith Codwell, talk about this, and you've heard me talk about it, and that is that we've needed for years a new correctional facility to provide rehab, criminal justice rehabilitation services in Napa County. It's been a long time coming, and I can report that having borrowed zero dollars, we were able to complete this hundred and thirty-three million dollar capital project on time, under budget, and today we received the certificate of occupancy. So on that subject, I can say that will be my final report on our relocated correctional facility. Um, county roads. Um, so, you know, I, I laugh here seeing my son because we, we, if we hit a pothole, if it's like in a driveway, my son will be like, oh, it's like a county road, you know? And he's always making fun of the potholes on the county road, and you're right, they, they, they're not great. Uh, we actually, uh, last, two years ago, had the lowest PCI pavement condition index in the entire Bay Area. That is not a badge of honor to have, but what is, is that we have improved our PCI, our pavement condition index, by ten points in one year. And so that is really, you know, goes towards those investments that we are making, and in this next fiscal year, uh, we have some more investments in the South County that are coming. First of all, South Kelly Road, uh, from Dublin to, to State Route twenty-nine. Uh, Tower Road, which, you know, I think we can all agree, there, there, it's barely can be qualified as a road right now with the amount, uh, the little amount of asphalt that is remaining on that. And also, we're going to be expanding into the third roundabout on the Dublin Road-Soskal Ferry interchange. So you might notice that right now, when you come off the roundabouts, there's just some congestion, and there's not great flow, and that's because what we are actually missing is the completion of that project, which is a third roundabout. So it will very much simulate the roundabout conditions that you see at First, Second, and California up in Napa. Um, next, um, I want to share this report with you, and I will make sure, uh, we have provided, uh, links to this, but I'll make sure that this gets over to all of you through the city manager. And one of the things that we all know is that unfunded mandates from the state of California are absolutely crippling to local governments. And so when I took over, um, as treasurer of the State Association of Counties, I made sure that we really made this a focus because it's one thing for us to do our jobs in our local capacities, but at the same time, we have to be able to tell the story of local government and how the decisions in Sacramento are impacting our ability to do that on a day-to-day basis. And so what CSAC did, the State Association of Counties commissioned this report, and this report is put together by functional areas. So, uh, administration of justice, it, it clues in, and some of the facts actually come straight from Napa County about the bailiff trial court security program and how the state of California is not funding it. Did you know they tell us we have to provide bailiffs to their judges, and it costs us three-quarters of a million dollars through the Sheriff's Department budget every single year? That doesn't even include all those things, I know Councilmember Lamontina, you're intimately aware, of all the requirements that we have to fulfill through Health and Human Services, of which we're not seeing a dime for. And so this, this idea of realignment, of being able to shift over services to lo, to local governments, is outstanding. We do know our constituents far better than those in Sacramento, but the dollar must in fact follow those services. And so we're gonna use this as an educational tool to our legislators to say, you need to follow those mandates with fun, with appropriate funding so that we can do our job. Um, speaking about funding and money, um, y'all are owed money, we all are owed money through our vehicle license and fee, and, uh, and the state of California has been less than helpful to what are called X S E R A F counties, of which Napa County is one of them. This is a complicated slide, and all it is to say is as enrollment goes down in public schools and our assessed value increases, our ability to retain our property taxes from the educational realignment shift is getting smaller and smaller. When Napa Valley Unified goes fully basic aid, there is not gonna be enough money in that account for us to draw out what is already budgeted and already owed to us by the state of California, and that's our vehicle licensing fee. For the county overall, it is a fifty million dollar payment that we are entitled to, and only because of our placement in, uh, E R A F one and two for the county and for the City of American Canyon, given your incorporation, you are affected by E R A F two, so your part is a little bit smaller, but not insignificant to your general fund. Uh, recently, I had the opportunity to testify before the state legislature at the invitation of our Senator Christopher Cabaldin, and we joined the fight, and we said we were here to, uh, to fight with San Mateo, who is in a very, very nasty battle with the Department of Finance, and, uh, he is our advocate on this, and we'll continue to keep you apprised because, um, all, all, uh, all boats rise together on this one in the county of Napa. Um, next, uh, this one also has great detail, but I will just say, um, the news from Washington, it just gets worse and worse. Like, I, I don't know, there's a worser, uh, worstest, I, I can just make up words for every day of how negatively affected we are in the county of Napa, starting with the fact that our brick, um, our Building Resilient Communities Grant was canceled. That was fifteen, that was gonna be thirty-five million dollars of federal funding with a fifteen million dollar match to provide home hardening and, uh, defensible space and, um, community wildfire, fire preparedness and fuel mitigation programs, and that's gone, wiped out. Um, in addition to, uh, that, we will, uh, be hosting, uh, the federal government for an audit of the nine thousand dollars that they did give us, so, uh, that has certainly come at a high cost. Um, when we look at, um, H R one, big, beautiful, bad, whatever be you wanna ascribe to it, um, this is going to negatively affect Napa County families in a tremendous way. One in four Napa County households use Medi-Cal as their primary insurance. Sixteen percent of American Canyon residents are Medi-Cal recipients. So please make no mistake that we're about to see some really difficult times for our families here if we don't get resolution and better understanding from the administration and at the federal government level that this is truly, um, a, a life and death situation for vulnerable families, it is a quality of life issue. Um, next, um, immigration, it's a big topic. Um, when I had the privilege of sitting, uh, where you are seated, we were approached in twenty fourteen, I believe it was, to participate in a program called the One Napa Valley Initiative to be able to help permanent residents, um, achieve citizenship through application assistance. Certainly, the needs on the immigration front have, uh, grown, and so the county of Napa has doubled its commitment to the One Napa Valley Initiative, that includes also rapid response services to ensure, um, at the end of the day, that, that we are able to keep families together, that we are able to protect law-abiding residents, um, from any unjust actions. So this is a collaborative that we are more than proud to be supporting here locally. Um, our agricultural report came out, um, I hope you, you saw a copy, oh, uh, there's one attached into my, uh, recent newsletter. Um, but make no mistake, agricultural production, it's, it's a hot, it's a hot ticket here, valued at over one billion dollars. And so that in and of itself tells us, uh, how vital everything from the production side, that happens a lot here in American Canyon and the logistics side, down to the farm workers who are touching the grapes and getting those grapes into the bottles. It's all a vital economic system here in Napa County, and the agricultural report does a really great job of highlighting all of this. Um, so, uh, you know, when you, when you're an original county and you're a hundred and seventy-five years old, you know, you have to look in the mirror every once in a while and ask yourself, uh, are we on track? Are we, are we doing things right? And I really thought, you know, it's a great time, we've got a new board, um, uh, I, it's a little odd, I'm the veteran at a, at a whole nine years on that Board of Supervisors, but it's a really great way to coalesce and, and to build, um, a unified vision with my colleagues and with our C E O, our department heads, and all of our sixteen hundred, uh, county employees. So we're embarking on a strategic, uh, plan, and we are, uh, we've released a survey, and I would invite, uh, anyone from the public, go ahead, scan the Q R codes, and please do participate in our survey, we want to hear from you, we want to know what's important to residents. So many times, we see it in these seats, and people say, well, there's nothing for residents to, to do. Uh, this is your opportunity to tell us that there's nothing for residents to do, if you so much feel like it. Um, it's also your opportunity to tell us what you value, uh, what keeps you here in Napa County, and what you want to see more of. And so we, uh, really hope that each of you will take the time and that our residents will also take the time to participate in this survey. Um, there was so much more I wanted to tell you, but, um, Melissa, my assistant, felt it was, um, overzealous on our part to include the other ten slides that we, we, uh, took away from this presentation. As you know, we are very grateful to be, uh, tenants downstairs, stop by anytime, we're here usually on Wednesdays and Thursdays, you know, borrowing, uh, activity that sends me, uh, advocating to either of our capitals right now, making sure that we're getting the state and federal funding that we need for vital services. And with that, be happy to answer any questions from the council. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Supervisor Ramos. Any questions from council? Seeing none. Lucas, your date is on. Thank you, thank you. Next, we'll be moving to our, uh, proclamation, proclamation for June twenty twenty-five as Pride Month. Do we have any recipients for Pride Month? Welcome. Um, June twenty twenty-five, I'm gonna read the proclamation, then I'll give you an opportunity to share some comments. Uh, June twenty twenty-five as Pride Month. Whereas the City of American Canyon recognizes and proclaims the month of June twenty twenty-five as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer, the L G B Q T Pride Month throughout American Canyon. And whereas the City of American Canyon observes Pride Month with a flag-raising ceremony to honor the history, the history of the L G B T Q liberation movement, and to support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movement, and advocates for the L B G, L G B T Q people within our community. And whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity, dignity and rights, L G B T Q individuals have made immeasurable impacts on the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country. And whereas the City of American Canyon is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for L G B T Q people in our, in our diverse community. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports the L G B T Q equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to the end, to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness, it provides support and advocacy for the American Canyon L B G, L G B T Q community, and is an opportunity to act and engage in dialogue, to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal, equal rights. And now therefore, it be resolved that I, Pierre Washington, Mayor of the City of American Canyon, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-five as Pride Month, that the rainbow flag will raise for the entire month of June in support of the L G B T Q community to recognize the influence, influential and lasting contributions they continue to make in our vibrant community in which they live, work, and play.
Thank you so much. Hi, everyone, thank you so much for having me here, if you can see me, I should probably be a little taller than the podium. My name is Kylie, I use she/her pronouns, and I work for L G B T Q Connection in Napa. Our mission is dedicated to creating a culturally diverse and trauma-informed community that amplifies the voices of queer and trans youth, peers, and elders. By providing culturally-based community events and socials, best practices trainings, youth leadership teams, Q D Biopoc Art Councils, and one-on-one support, we embrace a decolonized approach that promotes radical justice and celebrates communal solidarity. Moments like these are really important to our community. Um, nowadays, it is becoming harder and harder to be a queer person in America, uh, at the federal level, at the state level. Um, but sa, safe spaces are just so much harder to come by, and the City of American Canyon has really put in the work to become a safe space. They've never shied away from any discussions, anything like that, and, I mean, in a time when queer and trans individuals are being politicized and dehumanized just for existing, having a place that is safe is more important than ever. Celebrating Pride Month isn't just about celebrating our diversity, it is suicide prevention for our youth as well. Many of our queer and trans youth don't even realize that they can even live to be adults or even elders. And so while we celebrate ourselves in this, we're also celebrating our younger generations and the hope that we have equal rights. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. We have a proclamation that will take a picture with you in the front. Uh, the next proclamation will be the Juneteenth Independence Day for any and all of our representatives. And the same thing applies, I'll read the proclamation, then I'll give you, um, an opportunity to address, uh, everyone. Reading, Juneteenth Independence Day, whereas on January one eighteen sixty-three, President Lincoln issued, uh, the Emancipation Proclamation Declaration, and all enslaved people in the rebellious state would be henceforth forever free. And President, and whereas President Lincoln believed slavery to be a violation of principle of the Declaration of Independence, and that ending represented a new, that ending represented a new birth of freedom for the United States. And whereas although President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation freeing slaves in January eighteen sixty-three, it was not until June nineteenth eighteen sixty-five that the Union soldiers arrives in Galveston, Texas, announcing the end of the Civil War and bearing federal orders proclaiming the end of slavery in South, in the South and the Southwest United States. the end of slavery in South, in the South and the Southwest United States, Southwestern United States. And whereas Juneteenth or Juneteenth Independence Day has a special meaning to African-Americans which combines the word June and 19th commemorating the traditional observance of the end of slavery in the United States and is observed annually on June 19th. And whereas Juneteenth is an important opportunity to honor the principles of the Declaration of Independence and celebrate the achievement and the contributions African-Americans have made and continue to make in the, in the American Canyon and across our nation. And whereas on June 15, 2025, in partnership with the American Canyon Art Foundation and the American Canyon, in the City of American Canyon, we will be celebrating Juneteenth at Main Street Park. This is an unforgettable community event that celebrates African-American heritage, history and freedom through cultural ceremonies and activities that reflect the power of the community, family, art and tradition. And now therefore I Pierre Washington, Mayor of the City of American Canyon, on behalf of the city council, do proclaim June 19th, 2025 as Juneteenth Independence Day. In celebration of this day, I encourage all American Canyon communities to attend the Juneteenth celebration on June 15th, 2025 at Main Street Park.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Council and Mayor. Wow. This is the time that I love when it's time to give us the proclamation because that mean days away, it is the celebration that's coming. And what I love so much is being able to do it here in the City of American Canyon when we have more than 25 sponsors who have stepped up our community. All cultures, all diversity are on the map in the banner that you will see at the park on June 15th. And what I have enjoyed is coming in contact, I call myself their once-a-year friend picking up the check. And they greet me with open arms. And we are so proud to be in American Canyon with the vast community of diversity, coming to learn about our culture, coming to learn about our contributions, coming to see us in our attire, coming to hear our music of gospel, jazz, R and B. We are ready and don't forget the blues. We're going to have such a wonderful program for you. If you don't come, you're here about it because it's going to be one of those types of gatherings. We want to thank the American Canyon Arts Founda- Foundation for working with us, allowing us to bring our program to your organization for the arts. We thank the City of American Canyon for entrusting us to have this celebration and knowing that it's going to be a wonderful, outstanding opportunity. And do you know this is the fourth year? How time flies. Teabed has been such a support and this year I want to let them know, yes, I booked 10 rooms. So we are starting to work and get there. Before long, this is going to be a destination celebration for our Juneteenth. So we welcome you. We would like you to come. We would like for you to dance with us, sing with us, hug us. You know, that's what we do. That's our heritage. That's our culture. And so I am Brenda Knight, the event coordinator, and do I have a program set for you? So I welcome you. I will embrace you and I look forward to seeing you. And if I don't see you, I will remember that I didn't see your face.
So shall it be written, so shall it be done. Um, I am Orlando Harris and I won't keep you long as a Baptist, Black Baptist preacher would say, but when they say it, it means you have at least 20 more minutes. But I'm actually serious, I won't keep you long. Uh, so Brenda, thank you. I also want to say thank you to Mayor Washington, also Vice Mayor Joseph and to the council and to the City of American Canyon for your continued support of Juneteenth. As I said last year when I had this opportunity, Juneteenth celebration is about American history, not just Black history. Even with the unrelenting attacks that are coming out of Washington DC, we still have to recognize the importance of seeing one another as individuals, but also seeing one another in the cultures that we represent because those cultures are rich. I think I said something along these lines last year. I'm a proud resident of American Canyon and tonight we have some other folks who joined us because we have a group at American Canyon, the Black Men of American Canyon. They're a lot more than people think. And so what we've been doing is meeting and getting a strategy to understand how we can actually be a positive presence in the City of American Canyon, whether it's working with some of the kids at schools, some of the, um, you know, whether it's working with the council, but you're going to hear more about some of the things that we're doing. Uh, and so some of those gentlemen are here tonight. Uh, also a special shout out to my Juneteenth baby, Gabriel Ryan Harris, who was born, yes, 2005 on June 19th, Father's Day. And so I have my own Juneteenth baby. Uh, but again, I, I, again, I just want to make sure that you understand how important this day is to all of us. But again, it's just as important that we all celebrate it together, that we all celebrate one another. So don't look at this as just a day to celebrate Blackness and June 19th. Look at this as a day to celebrate one another. And so we look forward to having all of you come out and celebrate with us. Thank you.
Not, not only do we have the, uh, Juneteenth proclamation, but we also have a business license waiver fee that we are going to be, um, getting a motion on and a second and that we're going to pass that waiver, well, if it gets the, if I get, can receive the motion.
I, I will be happy to make that motion. I, a couple of clarifications. I think the intent was to waive the business license fee for the performers, not necessarily the vendors, because it's been understood that vendors are business people and they are expected. It's the performers that I think we wanted to make a distinction. So I'll make a motion, uh, let's see if I can find it. Just make a motion, uh, that we waive the business license fees for the performers at the 2025 Juneteenth event.
I second. I got a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. And now we'll take a picture with the two guys. Thinking if you did, if you guys heard Brenda tell me to get in the middle, she, she constantly tells me where I need to be standing and sitting and stuff like that. So I appreciate that Brenda. Um, now we'll move on to public comment. At this time, we'll open up public comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have a list?
I do. I have Beth Marcus.
Good evening. Um, I just wanted to say that I appreciate Cindy and Jeremy, what they did for Memorial Day. We had an, another awesome Memorial Day event. Um, it's so touching to see all the flags that are placed in the ground from our loved ones who surpassed in, um, during the war. So I want to thank them for that. Uh, number two, I want to thank Eric and Smithies for starting Melvin Road, uh, the road improvement. I'm so excited and it's in front of my yard. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Beth.
Hugh Marquez.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Hugh Marquez. Uh, I'd like to, uh, parrot what Beth said. Memorial Day event was a very, I thought was very successful this year and I think, uh, the, the whole committee really worked hard to make sure it was a successful event. I'm also here, uh, to represent the wall that heals. Um, I am a, the volunteer coordinator. So I will be the one getting the volunteers for this event. And I come to the council and to anyone else that has any, uh, information on where, uh, we can get volunteers. I have already contacted a few of our local veterans groups, um, but, uh, I don't know at all. So if any of you have any ideas where we can get volunteers, this is a regional event, not a city, it's a city event, but it's a regional, uh, access to, to get people to, to attend and to volunteer. So I'm here, um, as the volunteer coordinator to help me ask the council and the mayor to, uh, help me find some volunteers, uh, to, to get this event going. Okay? Thank you. The volunteers, they will do many things. They will, uh, we need volunteers, about 30 to 40 to set up and to break down. We have four-hour increments of, of duty. Uh, we have, uh, shifts, thank you. Uh, shifts that of, um, anywhere from someone at an information desk to someone who will be, uh, parking people, to people who will, uh, look for names on the wall. Uh, it is a, it is a four-day event that runs 24/7. So we will need volunteers 24/7, uh, for four days. So, um, I'm just here to come to the council and the mayor and, and let you know that we have begun. We had our first meeting the other day. Um, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the volunteers that we will need to, uh, get this accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Hugh.
Scott Meyer.
Good evening, Mayor Washington and Vice Mayor Joseph and Council. I guess my question is, um, are those the only business licenses that are going to get waived? Because with the Arts Foundation, we had to have our business license as well, same situation. Uh, the kid's business license got waived, Juneteenth's got waived. I was just wondering if the Arts Foundations for the, um, Park Fest was going to get waived too. Um, it's not so much the 20, $29 fee that we had to pay for the license, but there was a, a home business license that we had to pay and I don't even use my home for my business. So, um, and I don't make enough money to pay the $10,000 thing. I'm just a performer. So I was just wondering if we were going to get ours waived as well.
Thank you for your comment, Scott.
Clarence Mamoril.
Right. Hello, good evening, Mayor Washington and, uh, councilmen, uh, council members. So my name is Clarence Mamoril, a longtime resident and also longtime musician in town. A lot of you have heard me play. Um, and so I'm here as an advocate for the, following Scott. I felt, I'm here as an advocate also for the live, for the musicians and entertainers in town. Um, yes, as Scott said, we were part of the park, of the, of the three bands and the karaoke band that was, uh, that played for Park Fest for the American Canyon Art Foundation. Um, and, uh, just, just for some context, approximately one week before our event, we were told of the city, um, business requirement. And, um, I reviewed the ordinance and I have no problem with the ordinance. That's when it's helpful to be a musician and a lawyer at the same time. Um, but, um, oh, just, I, I do want council to be aware that our fee for, our band fee for, for doing Park Fest was $300. Our city business license fee was $103.93. Have the receipt. Um, so that's a third of the band fee. So just once again, to give some con- uh, some context. Um, so, um, yes, um, it would be wonderful if, uh, the council gave some considerations for, uh, for those entertainers and bands that particularly are entertaining, um, are here in town entertaining the residents at free events, much like the, uh, bands for the Juneteenth, uh, event. Um, and it's just as a general practice, um, it would be wonderful to have a, a band or an entertainment-friendly policy for, um, for the entertainers that come. I mean, it's summer's coming and, um, people are hungry for entertainment and that would only, um, encourage good entertainment for the benefit of our residents in American Canyon. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Clarence.
I have Valerie Zizek Morris on line, uh, so I was gonna move, move to her before we finish with Arvin.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Valerie, go ahead.
Hello. I just want to chime in as well. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, I'm chiming in on behalf of the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. I am the president, CEO. Um, I am a huge advocate for proper business in the City of American Canyon, along with people obtaining business licenses to do the proper business. But I do agree with the comments that have been said tonight about these fees that are being put on to the small businesses here in American Canyon. I think our food truck community is also another entity that is suffering from these, um, fees. We've added a $200 peddler's permit to every food truck that is doing business in American Canyon. And as you all know, with Meet Me in the Street, we have close to 40 food vendors that come out for this event. And adding a $200 peddler's permit when we have an ordinance against peddling in the City of American Canyon is also not a good look for American Canyon. Um, I have had this conversation with city staff and, um, council members over the last year and it has been something that I have tried to keep private in hopes that we could resolve it without bringing it to city council. But as I'm hearing the other vendors and the other performers being upset by the fees, I think this is time to go public with this matter as well. And I think that, you know, along with Juneteenth, with the performance, uh, the Park Fest with the performers and with Meet Me in the Street, this has been a big deal for our community. So I hope the city council hears this, understands this matter and can move forward in the future to making it right for everybody who wants to do business at the events in the City of American Canyon. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Valerie. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. And I have Arvin Nysel. And I have Arvin Nishel.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Arvin Nishel. I want to take this moment to speak from a heart, not only resident of American Canyon, but as someone who truly loves the city and its people. One time, our beloved President John F. Kennedy inspired the nation with these words, "Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for the country." Inspired me too much. This message deeply moved me, and I carry it with me always. I love this wording. In that same spirit, I have dedicated for the last 16 years to building culture bridges in American Canyon. I am proud to have introduced and organized three Indian culture events that have become part of the fabric of the city. It's a holy festival, and multicultural events, and one event I do in my house, that's a fire festival. I think most of us have attended that event. These events were not just for Indian culture, they were about building community, about sharing tradition, and about helping neighbors understand one another better. American Canyon is a growing city with a growing heart. I am proud to say that I have contributed to making a more inclusive, vibrant, and culturally inherent. So tonight, I have echoed a word of J.F. Kennedy, and I humbly ask, not for this city it can do for me, but I can continue to do for this city. Thanks for giving me this opportunity. So before I close it, I have my friend, Dan from Napavelli Register. I can't find him. So, great person from Napavelli Register. I met him twice. Our beloved Festival of Colors, Holi, which have been celebrated in American Canyon from the last 16 years, recently received national recognition. A photo of this year celebrated was selected as a photo of the month of the national magazine editor and publisher. So this photo came, the biggest picture in a national magazine. It says "Photo of the Month." That's really a big celebration for the city. It says, "Children throwing colors powder on each other during the annual American Canyon Holi celebration on Sunday, April the 6th, 25." So it's mean that the whole nation knows about American Canyon. That's the main thing. So photo of this year's celebration was selected by the photo of the month for the national magazine, E and P. What makes this event more meaningful is that first time it happened in the City of American Canyon. I don't think anybody has left a picture like that in the city. So I welcome Mr. Red Dan from the Napavelli Register. My wife is here for, check me what I'm doing. And we have a bunch from the city, and our planning commissioners. So they all came here for to celebrate this event, and without food, there's no celebration. So food has to be there to celebrate. So we brought some Indian food, Indian samosas, and some cakes for everybody, because this is our very great player, having this picture in the middle of this magazine as a photo of the month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Arvin. With that said, I'm going to close public comment, but as Arvin mentioned, he brought some refreshments outside, so we're going to take about a five-minute recess to enjoy those refreshments, because the party's not a party until you have food, right?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Pierre.
Am I scaring you there?
Yeah, you were for a minute. I was like, what's going on?
That's what you do. Getting shorter.
Okay, everyone, I'm going to call the meeting back into order. And I'm going to reopen public comment for Fran Lemos. Fran?
I would just like to say about the music, there's not much to do in American Canyon, no nightlife. And when you have music or a musical affair anywhere, it's wonderful for the community. So I'd like to see some kind of an adjustment or whatever happens to make it a welcoming, because we need to have... because we need to have something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. I'll reclose our public comment and move to agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes from council? We have about nine consent items. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to accept this consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. Moving on to public hearing, item number 15, Public Hearing for Citywide Land and Lighting Assessment District, the LLAD, fiscal year 2025-26. Erica?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the city of American Canyon, public. Erica Almond Smith is Public Works Director here to just provide you, I guess, the opening of the public hearing for the LLAD Lighting Assessment District for Zones 1, 2, and 3. Nothing to update from the business being where we had to set the hearing. No big surprises this year, no big changes. The standard CPI increase for Zone 1 is 2.76% increase. Zone 2 is the 6% recommendation for increase to cover the additional capital project costs for the bathroom. And then the Zone 3 is a 2.756% CPI increase. We had our pop-up meetings, and I'm here for any comments you have or for the public hearing and any feedback from the residents.
Okay, thank you for your update, Erica. Are there any clarifying questions? Yes, Councilmember Oro.
Yeah, I'm gonna say it every year, and hopefully we'll get it up and involved, but has the section that is in front of the high school on a little berm there between the light and probably the bus stop, we identified that a few years ago as a city property. I've seen it's kind of maintained. I don't know if that's part of the LLAD now, but it seems like it's part of the Vintage Ranch one. I don't know if you have any updates on that.
I have discussed with staff, and it's the deal is that the irrigation is, the land, I guess, on that slope is ours, and the irrigation is the school district. So it's probably take further discussion with them, whether we plant it or scape it, some kind of improvement along there, but it's gonna take more than just a meeting to discuss with them. We haven't engaged with them yet, but we probably should to discuss that, so it's more of a... They did bark one year, they took the landscaping out and put bark in many years ago. It just washed down the rains, so something further needs to be discussed and agreed upon there.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that there's no other questions from council, I'd like to open it up to public comment for item number 15. Madam Clerk, anybody online?
I have no cards, and there are no listeners online.
And seeing no one inside of the room, I'll return to council for additional statement questions or an adoption of the resolution. It's a resolution approving the 2025-26 Annual Engineering Report.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other questions or comments, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2025, a resolution approving the 2025-26 Annual Engineers' Report for the Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District, approving the budgets within the engineers' report, confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts, and authorizing the levying collection of annual assessments for fiscal year 2025-26.
I'll second.
We have a second. Can I get a roll call? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. Next public hearing, item number 16, fiscal year 2025-26, recommended budget for adoption. Juan?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, members of the public. This is the grand finale here for our fiscal year 26 budget presentation. We're looking for council to adopt a resolution that approves the final proposed budget here. This is a long process. We kicked off in February, March, April, May. We've met with the Finance Up Committee. We presented extensively to council last meeting. This is gonna be a more abbreviated presentation. Not much has changed, but here we are on June 3, looking for council final budget adoption of the operating budget. So from last council meeting on May 20, what has changed? Well, one thing with the direction of the council, we have added the TR 26-200, which is a project where we are allocating $5 million to the Rio de Mar road extension. That is going to be from the railroad tracks to Highway 29, and that's gonna come out of the traffic impact fee, so what we call the TIF fund. That is the only thing that has changed since we presented to the council last time. But before I continue here, I'm actually going to kick it off to our new Finance Director, Jim Cruz. So this is probably my last presentation on the budget. She will take over from here from moving forward. So if you have any questions, I'll be back to discuss the forecast.
Thanks, Juan. And hello, Jim.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Washington, council members, and valued community members. I just wanted to take this time also to, you know, thank the council for your direction and input, and all the other departments for the collaboration that went into putting this together, your patience with us, and all the questions that we're asking, and the commitment to meeting the deadlines that we set to be able to bring this today. So the general fund remains the same as presented on May 20, which is a balanced budget. The general fund is estimated at $32.7 million, with property tax being our biggest source of revenue at 47%. And the expenditures also estimated at 32.7. Total personnel cost, which is the largest, makes up the salaries, benefits, retirement, and post-employment benefits, which is retiring medical, and that is 32.8% of the budget. Salaries are at 7.2 million, which is a 7.2% increase from last fiscal year, and that has incorporates the COLAs and three additional FTEs that affect the general fund. The benefits are 3.5 million, and that is a 5.6% increase, and that is attributed to health care, workers' comp, and pension, and the retiring medical. Going more into the city staffing, so there's a total of 119 FTEs, and this is the full-time employee count across all the funds departments. And it's, it is four additional compared to the prior fiscal year. The personnel requests that we want to highlight here are, is an additional accounting assistant in finance, an administrative clerk in public works, an additional maintenance worker in public works wastewater collections, and a recreation supervisor in Parks and Recreation Department. Also, on the part-time side, there is an additional service worker in the building ISF. The total fund balance is not gonna change, and we'll be meeting our 25% contingency target of 8.2 million. The contingency reserves are only to be used when we're ready to hit the panic button, so it's basically not for emergencies only. And items in all the other, in all the other, in all the other fund balances include the deposits from developers and TOFI funds for police. And then there's the unassigned fund balance of $1.8 million. And the unassigned fund balances is available resources that hasn't been designated for any specific purpose yet. So it can be used to help mitigate unexpected expenses or revenue shortfalls. And the best practice is to maintain a healthy but not too excessive unassigned fund balance, which is what we have here. So, let's see, so Juan will talk about the five-year forecast.
So we went a little quick there, because, again, for those of you that may not have been here, last council meeting, we spent about an hour and a half going the entire presentation, talking about all the extensive revenues, property tax, sales tax, personnel expenses, and so forth. The bottom line here for this fiscal year, fiscal year 26, which starts July 1, is that we are presenting a balanced budget, and that is important, because, as I mentioned last time, a lot of agencies, a lot of other cities are having a hard time trying to balance budget. As Supervisor Bellia Ramos mentioned, that, you know, the state is always trying to dip into the cities' pockets and so forth. If you see here, that second line there of revenues is in lieu of VLF. We are projected to receive $2.4 million of in lieu of VLF. Now, that was something that was collected via the DMV, Department of Motor Vehicles, back in 2005. The state had some budget issues, and they determined that they needed to do what's called a swap. So they swapped that, they took that VLF money that was, that the DMV was providing to the cities and counties. They took that money and then swapped it with the, what they were providing in terms of property tax to school districts that were non-basic aid. If you are familiar, Napa County School District is in danger of becoming a basic aid school. What that means is that we are potentially technically going to lose the VLF, in lieu of VLF funding. That hasn't been the case. There's been two counties that have actually, their schools have gone, yeah, in that categorization. San Mateo, County of San Mateo is one of them, and the State of California has actually backfilled those revenues. So we have some history there. We're not as concerned that the state may not potentially backfill those, but it's something to be cautious over and keep an eye on. As we look at this five-year projection here, we have total revenues here, if you saw, we are balanced at 32.7 revenues and 32.7 in expenditures. As we look at going out further here, revenues continue to be healthy for several reasons. Property tax continues to grow, as you, again, see in the city, construction is going on, development is happening. We continue to see property tax increase. Sales tax will continue to increase. Sales tax will continue to increase by means of what we are projecting in fiscal year 29, 30, and 31 is going to be the Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens facility. Hopefully, we're projecting that at that time. There is activity there. There's some shows, there is some vendors, there are some restaurants, beer and wine sales, that in turn brings in sales tax. Also, first phase of potentially hotels, people coming in, spending money, we're projecting that. Obviously, this is a five-year projection. As we get closer to those years and more information comes on that type of development, we'll certainly adjust as needed. Again, this is a projection, so this is our best estimate of what we think is going to happen. As we look at the salaries and benefits, in particular, the sheriff's contract, we have $9.7 million this year. It is increasing 10.3, 10.7, 11.1. That is a contract that we have in place with the sheriff's department. And that also includes one officer in each of those years per the contract that we have, so we haven't adjusted any positions in the budget. The only positions we have are the contracted positions through the sheriff's office. So that's already baked in into this budget. Overall, though, if we look at this at a graphical representation, you can see the fiscal year 26 is 32.7. It's even. The goal here, obviously, my goal and Jim's goal, is to stay above that red line. Those are our expenses. We want to have a structurally balanced budget. We don't want to be in a deficit, so what we're looking at here is barely staying above that. I know the graphical representation may not show that, but when I'm looking at fiscal year 29, it's 36.7 versus 35.7, so it's about $1 million in surplus, and then we kinda ratchet down a little bit more. So we want to continue to be vigilant and stay above that line. So with that said, we'll stop here and take any questions from council on the general fund, if there are any, before we continue to the next funds.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yeah, so a couple of detailed questions that I keep forgetting to ask. I think we have maintained our membership in the chamber at like 50,000 a year. Is that in there?
Yes, that's in there.
Good. And then temporary staffing in field operations like streets or parks, did we, do we provide, you know, temporary help in the summer months just to augment their workforce?
Yes. What we call those are service workers. So we have, we have two service workers in parks, two service workers in streets. We also have a service work, two service workers in water operations, and then one in sewer. We are also adding an additional service worker, part-time help for the building maintenance.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
No other questions?
All right, Jim will wrap it up.
So the final funds that I want to talk about is the Capital Improvement Fund, since that's, those are the ones where we had a change in. The revenues, impact fees, stayed the same at 13.3, but the transfers in went to 37.9 million. That's an additional $5 million coming from the traffic to, and the expenditures as well. So the fund balance will end there at 10.5 of all of the impact fee funds. The next, the next report, I know there's a lot of numbers in here, but it shows the projected fund balances, and most of them are ending in a positive fund balance. There are certain funds that might have a negative fund balance, and those are usually like the grant funds, where there's like a timing issue, where we spend the money first, then we have to, we have to do a claim to get reimbursed, and sometimes it, you have to finish the entire project before you can do a reimbursement, so sometimes that'll be over like a couple, we won't get it for a couple of years after we spend it. On the next one, I just wanted to highlight the fund balances for the, for the water operations and the wastewater operations. They look healthy at over 20 million, but that is because it includes the investment in capital assets. So if you take away the investment in capital assets, the fund balance for water is 8, 8.6 million, and wastewater is 6.1 million. And so, yeah, so overall, the entire budget across all funds is 154.2 million. So, yeah, if you have any question, any more questions on that?
Counsel, any questions?
That's the end of our presentation.
Thank you, Jim. Doesn't seem like there's any question from the council, so I'll move it to public comment to see if there's any questions for item number 16. Seeing none in the room. Madam Clerk, anything online?
I have no one online.
Thank you. I'll return to council for any additional questions, if any, statement or acceptance of the resolution.
The only other thing is, and we didn't discuss it, but included in the packet was the schedule of key performance indicators, and I appreciate the fact that they're there and they're kind of getting finalized. And without getting into the weeds, I'd like to suggest that maybe looking at the KPIs might be something for the Finance Committee to look at, in part because the two people who are KPI junkies are on the Finance Committee, and we'll get into the weeds and everyone else will not want to hear it. So, like I said, I appreciate the indicators, and I think the city manager and I have had a discussion about, you know, which ones are more descriptive. a discussion about, you know, which ones are more descriptive versus indicators, but I think there's a lot of data there, and I think we could do something. And so my only suggestion is that we should refer that to the finance committee to kind of refine and, and provide some of our input.
Thank you.
But the budget itself looks good. I'm glad that we had a few little items in there that we were talking about. I'm looking forward to the carryovers that we can apply to our capital set-aside funds, so we're looking good from my perspective.
Was that a motion?
So, yeah, that, that being the case, allow me to adopt a resolu, or to move that we adopt a resolution, 2025, next in order, and as soon as I get there, oh, a resolution approving adoption of the recommended operating budget for fiscal year 2025, '26.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Oh, we have a second. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. And moving on to business item number 17, the five-year capital improvement program, fiscal year 2025, '26 to 2029, '30. Erica?
Good evening again. We've just got a minute here to set this up. Got a little bit of the PowerPoint here just to provide an overview. All right. Here to present the five-year capital improvement program, thank you for approving the budget for at least fiscal year '25, '26. Just to give you an overview, we do this a little bit, a little bit, the same thing every year. A long-term plan is six to 20 years, the short term's a five-year capital improvement program. And what appropriated budget is actually for the first fiscal year, which is '25, '26. Stats of funding, undetermined funding, that we identify a project need, and then the funding may not be determined at the time, a five-year forecast, and a funding available for the '25, '26 appropriation. Here's a picture of our long-term capital improvement program versus a five-year CIP. All the balls in the basket are your rates, your enterprise funds, your state funds, measure T, or measure U now, I actually should change that, I got to update that to measure U, impact fees, grants, and our loans. And then our five-year phasing, when funding's more certain, the closer we are in the fiscal year period, and then it gets less certain the further out. So you see, some projects we may have pushed out a bit, like the aquatic facility improvements, we know now, we now know that like that project is not going to be just a 200 or 70,000 dollar project, it's going to be more like a three and a half to four million dollar project. So that got pushed out in the future fiscal years, as we determine how we're going to pay for those funds, projects. Here's a five-year capital improvement budget summary. As you can see, our first fiscal year budget is at 48.2 million dollars. Majority of that funding is our transportation dollars. And the future years, we have a lot of projects starting this coming year or in the process, so there's 42 that were written in the report, 45 coming out tonight. One of those is broken down in three different phases, Green Island Road, we have the undergrounding, we have the road widening construction, and we have the Class 1 Trail, they're all going to be broken in different construction phases. And then we have some new projects that were added as far as the Rio Del Mar extension, and you'll see some different projects in there that were added as far as the initiatives for this coming year from city council earlier on in the retreat. The future years are probably more projects that'll fill in the next four years, but for now, we're at 48 million. Last year's capital five-year budget summary was 73 million, so we've come down in dollars, probably because like we pushed out the aquatic center. There's some projects that are pushed out because we're less known what those budgets are going to be. We're in the middle of a Parks master plan that'll be scheduled next year, so these numbers will come firmed up as, again, as we forecast future dollars. Here's a pie chart showing the big bunches, the numbers. The transportation, of course, is 76% of the budget, and then you have your 5%, or 6% in water, 6% in wastewater, the half percent in recycled water projects, 4% in civic facility upgrades, and then Parks and Recreation's at 8%. For fiscal year '25, '26, we have a total number of 45 capital improvement projects. Seven in civic, 11 in Parks and Recreation, 13 projects in transportation, seven in water, five in wastewater, and two in recycled water. A lot of these projects are in a different phase of startup, some are already budgeted, but with the very few, you'll see in the next slide here, there's only 11 new projects actually being proposed in '25, '26, 34 that are currently budgeted and underweight in some fashion or ready to start. And here's, here's a summary of the civic projects. Five of these projects are in a status of construction. The re-roof, we're awarding the contract coming at the next meeting, recommending the ward. The courtyard is under construction, that'll be brought to you. We didn't increase funds in the capital improvement program because we need to come to council as a separate item on that item, on that project. The city hall, city hall aquatic center, or Boys and Girls Club parking lot, and the Napa Junction EV charging stations have been completed, but we didn't want to close that project out just yet, just to make sure we have all final invoicing completed and reimbursements from MVTA on that project since it was grant-funded. And then the police parking lot was also completed this fiscal year, but again, we were just making sure that the last bit of the budget has been completed, all invoices dotted, crossed, and we've got all our reimbursals before we close the books. The two new projects are the EV charging stations, which we are working on a plan, that's a TFCA grant through MVTA again. We'll have 100,000 coming in next fiscal year and 200,000 in a future fiscal year for a total of 300. We were, the county coincidentally just sent out an email for climate action last week about multi-jurisdictional requests for technical assistance from MCE to assist in locations for EV charging, so we're kind of primed and ready to look at sites other than city hall and beyond, and maybe possible Level 3 chargers pending availability of power. So as we know, PG&E is one of the big, big unanswered question, can we do it in time for a grant? And then the city monument sign replacement, that is a new project in '25, '26, identified by city council earlier this year at the council retreat. I forgot to mention, we completed six projects in the last fiscal year, two of which, again, were the EV charging station and police department parking lot, then we have the Benton Way rehabilitation project, new open space. You'll start to see some of these numbers, there's no longer 2013 numbers in front of the project numbers. We're now, I think, the oldest project is the 2016 Green Island Road, and then, of course, like Parks, we're now catching up to our projects, no longer, 2013 finally dropped off the list, which was the new open space project. So Wetlands Edge is now active on here, we have only two new projects in Parks, since we had a lot of projects that are in process right now. We have the community park playground replacement project coming online this next fiscal year, and the wetlands restoration and public access project, that is implementing the wetlands restoration plan that was adopted a year ago, and we received 1.2 million dollars. Well, Friday is the official board meeting where they're going to tell us whether they're going to award us the funding for Measure AA, and then we can start implementing the project as far as getting RFP out, signed documents in '25, '26, and getting RFP out for design consultants that includes CEQA permitting for that project. So just one more phase in the project. Streets, we have 13 projects here, and the new projects are Rio Del Mar Extension and Melvin Road pavement rehabilitation. Again, it was nice to see that we had Benton and the Green Island Road Underground completed this last fiscal year, so we can start the road widening. And Class 1 Trail, we're very close of getting our authorization from Caltrans, we have a couple extra steps, but we should be seeing that soon. They moved the obligation for the One Bay Area grant funding to federal fiscal year '26, so that's just this fall, so we're, we're still on track for getting that out to bid. And then a summary of the utility projects, we have five new projects here. We have the Little League Field Irrigation, that's converting it from potable to recycled water. We're leveraging our development, hopefully Crawford multifamily housing, I'm paying for that work as far as their will serve, and their zero-water footprint offset. The North Kelly Water Main upgrade is now added for this year, North Hampton Water Main replacement, this is one of the reasons why we haven't been able to pave North Hampton because of the utilities, so getting that on board and starting design in this coming fiscal year. The Oathill tank fencing, we're going to be adding a new pump station installed up there as far as the Oathill project, so getting the proper security fence lined up around Oathill and protect our assets. And then lastly, a sledge removal and hauling project, the wastewater, the wastewater reclamation facility. On this list, we completed the Cartagena manhole rehabilitation, thanks to city street staff for getting that rehabilitated this year and at a significant cost savings. I think we projected 100,000 plus on that, and I think the, the project worth is less than $50,000 with staff time and materials. And I'm here to answer any questions, but there's a lot of projects in process, and looking forward to this next fiscal year and closing out a lot more than this year as far as, we have six projects, and I know we're going to have some park restroom projects completed, and many street projects that are currently under construction.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions or clarifying questions from council?
Just on the Cartagena project, what was the problem? I mean, it was bizarre that the roads sank or the manholes, yeah. Do we know we fixed it? Because it just seemed bizarre, and I don't understand.
There's been several theories, I think, believe it was identified in 2019 as there was a settling issue becoming apparent out there. We've had the geotech out there several times, thinking it's just, it's just lack of compaction around the manholes at the time of construction of the site. There's thoughts that perhaps there might be some aquifer activity underneath, groundwater activity that could be causing it, not like, non, like free aquifer. I had a consultant actually come to us saying that he believes there might be water out there, because we've, there's a spring into the creek, in that subdivision, in Walsh Creek, so that could feather out to some opportunity for the city to claim as free water coming out, but nothing definitive, just to be honest. But there's theories out there that it's water, it was lack of compaction in the prior work, there's still settling perhaps out there, but it seems like the biggest change has resolved, but it's, it's a mystery, because the mains are still at the levels they were set at.
Okay. If there's no more questions from council, I'll open it up at this time for public comment for item number 16.
I have a question for North Hampton Water Main Replacement. I live in North Hampton, that has been terrible for years, so both the water main replacement and then that road, Lake Heights Bridge, they do the water main first, so the road gets repaved theoretically?
Theoretically, it's not combined yet as a...
Erica, if you could just say her question, so people...
Oh, really, Steve? The question was, are we going to be repaving North Hampton once the water main replacement? Right now, it's a standalone project, but the opportunity is there to then we can go in there and pave as a separate project.
Thank you.
I have the same question for...
You could walk up to the mic, Scott.
Counsel, I have the same question for Andrew. After the sewers replaced, is there going to be surfacing and everything on that road too, because it's pretty bad?
The answer is yes, that's in the Measure U five-year plan, but I believe that's following, it's either one or two fiscal years that it's, it's showing up as planned.
Seeing no other questions in the room, are there any questions online?
There, there are no hands online.
Okay, we'll close public comment, return to council for additional statements or adoption of the resolution.
All right, if there are no other questions or statements regarding this, I move that we adopt resolution number 2025, adopting the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2025, '26 to 2029, '2030.
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a second, can we do a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. There's no other, oh, were you going to say something else?
Thank you.
Oh, I'll say, there's no other business item, we'll move on to our management and staff oral reports, Mr. Holly?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to tell you all the wonderful things that are happening over the next couple weeks here in American Canyon. First, starting on June 11th, the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce is hosting Meet Me in the Streets out on American Canyon Road from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. If you're not there, then you're not part of the cool club, so, just saying. Also, on June 13th, the Philip West Aquatic Center is going to be hosting Bikini Bottom Splashin' Movie Night. This is going to be from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., and we're going to be featuring Sponge, the SpongeBob movie. And then on June 15th, in partnership with the American Canyon Arts Foundation and Brendan Knight Events, we will be hosting the American Canyon Juneteenth Celebration at Main Street Park from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Evening, that's it? Okay. Well, moving on to our mayor, council comments, and committee reports, we'll start with you, Vice Mayor.
Nothing to report, I was off on vacation for most of the time.
Very nice. Councilmember Oro?
I did attend a LAFCO meeting yesterday, I'll be attending a Napa Valley Transportation Committee Corporation meeting, Napa Valley Tourism Corporation meeting on Thursday, and I'll make sure to try to get that in my next written report.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lamatina?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, Mayor. The county, I attended a flood control and water conservation meeting on your behalf, and of course, Memorial Day was well-spent, was a nice day, thank you very much for all those who attended. Again, on your behalf, I was, I had the honor to give the proclamation that day. And for the Wall of the Hills, I am part of that committee, I want to plug for Hugh Marquez. So for those that are watching that want to volunteer, there will be a link sent out, I believe the easiest way to do that now is through, Ally, can we go through the, the site? And there's a link. So in that link, there are several positions throughout that four-day process, I mean, all the way from 0, 0, from 12 o'clock, midnight, to all, you know, whatever the case, they're like four-hour shifts. So if you are remotely interested in helping out, please look at our website and, and volunteer, and that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. I have everything in my attached report, but I want to thank Councilmember Cruz for, for standing in for me on Memorial Day, and for Flood District, Councilmember Oro for standing in for me on the Fire District. I think you were on vacation, so you couldn't stand in for me for anything.
I want to apologize for not being your vice mayor this week.
Now let's move on to future agenda items. Vice Mayor, do you have anything?
We, we've already talked about the business fee issues, so I just want to remind everyone that, that it is on our agenda or our radar, and hopefully we can bring it up sooner rather than later.
Councilmember Oro?
Actually, I was just going to second that.
Okay, Councilmember Cruz?
I guess I was going to third that same thing. We want to talk about that, it's, I know that a lot of folks here, especially the musicians, bringing it up. I know there's some type ordinance that's been adopted back in 92, when it first got incorporated, I think it was like ordinance number 20, it's within the first 20. So it's, it's definitely outdated, it's something that we could look up and, and research and, and update, that particular ordinance regarding this, the business licenses. I think that's a, an issue with us that we need to correct with our residents, thank you.
Do you need anything to move forward on that?
It's already on the list here, shows up on the council-directed items at the bottom of your, your packet there.
Got you, thank you. We've concluded our business for this evening, and we are adjourned. Good night, American Canyon. [applause]